Meetings called to order and I'd like to announce we did have a 6:30 executive session where we discussed personnel label issues on the full call.
Mrs. Elder, President, Mr. Hauser, Mrs. Cozart here, Mrs. Mays here, Mr. Mohler, Mr. Music, Mr. Palmer, Dr. George, Dr. Lottman.
Here. Solicitors report, Mr. Nichols?
No report.
I have no legislative report. Education plan, Mrs. Mays?
Yes, thank you. It is September so we are welcoming back our student representatives and our new representatives are Hannah Mears and Charlie Robbins. We welcome them after your report. Thank you.
Hello everyone. For those of you who don't remember, I'm Hannah Mears. Charlie and I have split up our responsibilities as representatives and I have taken over the elementary schools. Without further ado, the elementary schools have started off the year great with kindergarten orientation and open house programs. Last week, a lot of the elementary students wore red, white, and blue to show their respects for 9/11. And Mountain View Elementary Schools are now getting ready for the Wellness Walk for Education on October 2nd. And the theme is Walk Around the Block with records and 50's themes ideas.
Hello, my name's Charlie Robbins again. And I'm reporting on the junior high and senior high this year, so kick it off. At the senior high, open house was on September 10th, went extremely well. Lots of volunteers from the student body helped guide parents around, make sure everything went smoothly, parents follow the bells, everything went very nicely. Then, on September 11th, in this room, we have our September 11th, I guess, presentation where teachers come talk to the students about that night and what they experienced. During normal presentations at the senior high, you can see cell phones out, you can see people talking, not even paying attention. It's fantastic to see that on this day, people respecting it, everybody paying attention, everybody silent, just completely focused on the meaning of this day and what it represents. You can really tell the kids take it seriously and it means something. It's great to see from our student body. And then, in the junior high, on the 17th, they're going to have their open house, which well, I'm sure will go fantastically. And the Chorals Cats, as we know, the best of the best singers in the junior high, will start their tryouts. And that'll be exciting. And then the French and German clubs will have their inaugural meetings. And that's what's going on at the junior high. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Lottman. Evoked report, Mr. Parker, do you have any reports?
I can't follow the student report, but I'll tell you the Mark Charles phrase, the evoked report is going fantastically.
Good days, thank you. Educational programs, Dr. Decker.
Good evening. I would just like to start by reviewing curriculum meeting minutes our meeting was held last month. And I would like to highlight some of the information that was covered. I can't believe we're already here in school three weeks, students, three weeks blink an eye, it's going to be nine weeks, 12 weeks. With that being said, we held our new teacher induction August 20th and August 27th, where there were various trainings on the 40 developmental assets as well as professionalism. Alice training will be given to our new teachers as well, as well as the remaining teachers here at Greater Latrobe who do not receive that training. Our in-service days, our opening in-service day, Dr. Lottman joined us to welcome the staff and we appreciate that. She had a great message. And we also reviewed our district goals for 2015, which is the focus on career awareness, career pathways, as well as our STEM initiative. And when I talk about our STEM initiative, we talk about a two-pronged approach to STEM education. I believe you would remember Project Lead the Way. It is a set curriculum that we have implemented in elementary, junior, and senior high. And at the elementary level, we have modules that are taught in kindergarten, 3rd, and 5th grade. And in the junior high, we have two course offerings as well as the senior high. So, that is a set STEM curriculum. At the elementaries, all kindergarten, 3rd, and 5th graders will have the opportunity to participate. And at the junior high, it is, there are courses that our students can select and elect the same way as the senior high. Our goal is to continue to expand that Project Lead the Way curriculum. And again, we received grants from Chevron and we are utilizing those monies. And we are the only elementary school in Westmoreland County to have received that grant to implement the launch program. The second prong approach is providing professional development to all teachers K through 12 in all content areas and all subject areas. We have partnered with the Carnegie Science Center. And we had our first professional development session with 50 of our teachers as well as counselors. And the professional development focuses on developing action plans for infusing STEM concepts across the curriculum. We're very excited about that. We had a wonderful day on August 25th. And we have upcoming plans to continue that professional development with the remainder of the teaching staff at all levels. Along with that, we had trainings on suicide prevention, which is the mandated training that we provided to our teachers, as well as presentations again from the Prasad Organization. Our teacher leaders met and we talked about the goals for the teacher leaders and continuing the implementation of our common assessment and utilizing a common template to analyze that data, which will help drive our instruction. And more information was presented regarding our STEM pathway training. As far as administrative, we had a retreat in July where we all participated in the Alice training with Mr. Corobta who provided that. And we had specific data meetings where we looked at data at all building levels very closely. So, it was a busy summer. This year, our curriculum cycle, we will have English Language Arts 7 through 12 that will be analyzing the curriculum as well as possible textbook purchases. Our Health and Physical Education, K to 12 is on that cycle, as well as Family Consumer Science and our Social Studies in kindergarten through 6. If you recall, last year in Social Studies, we did a curriculum review with the 7 through 12. So, any questions on the curriculum meeting that was held last month? The next upcoming meeting, I believe, is November 19th, if I have that correct. The second thing I would just like to report out, and you may, might have heard this in the media, I would like to review the status of the School Performance Profile or SPP. If you remember, SPP replaced AYP, Atticative Early Progress. And last year, the principals gave a presentation on how each building scored. Each building is addressed a score. And those scores are based on PSSA data, Keystone data, attendance, graduation rates, SAT scores, et cetera. We did very well last year. We had two of our buildings that were in the 90s as well as three of them that were in the high 80s. With the change this past spring in the PSSA, the PSSA was totally aligned to the PA Corps. So, the PSSA was basically a different test which required much more higher level thinking, multiple steps in various problems for the students. Across the state, the scores with the PSSA, we have seen a decline. With that being said, the state had petitioned and received a waiver for SPP scores for this year for all buildings unless you have an 11th grade in your building. The 11th grade Keystone scores, obviously, from those cohort of students will be utilized to help assess the school and to come up with the SPP score. So, simply stating, we had our test last year with the PSSAs. This year, totally revamped the test, basically a new test. You cannot compare achievement and growth with data from last year that was based on a different test with different expectations. So, we will have a one-year pause with an SPP score for all of our elementaries as well as our junior high school, but we will receive the SPP score for the senior high because of the 11th grade with that. And that's just a piece of information. As you hear it in the news, I know a lot of publicity has been brought up around that and I just wanted to give you some background. I know I spoke to some board members prior to the meeting. But are there any questions that I could answer pertaining to that waiver for the SPP for one year?
I think it's interesting that 29 states inside Pennsylvania have requested, certainly not just Pennsylvania, which obviously is a national question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Decker. There are certain things that will be under agenda next week for approval. First, we're going to approve the 2016 Grand Chamber of Commerce in Philadelphia and that's a book work through the sixth of next year. To approve Louisville Southwestern Pennsylvania Transition Works, Transition Services Agreement for the 2016-16 school year. And to approve Jeanine Stoddard's Speech Pathologist Therapy Services Agreement for the 2015-16 school year. To approve the St. Vincent College Prevention Projects for the 2015-16 Service Delivery Agreement. To approve Paul and Teacher Speech and Language Therapy Services Contract Agreement again for 2016 school year. To approve the outside again from School of External Education Contract for 2016-16 school year. Now, to approve the Westmoreland Intermediate Access Building Services Agreement for this coming school year. Those will all be agenda items. Any questions on any of those? Pretty much through what we'll do. Okay, and the Curriculum Committee Meeting Minutes, Dr. Decker covered while she was in the cubby. And our next curriculum committee meeting will be Tuesday in November 17th this year at 5:30 PM here in the CSD. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Finance, Mrs. Elder?
Thank you. The treasures before will be available to you all by email. After this meeting, there's a little bit of a glitch in the response, where it will be available. Kind of those will be on the agenda. Grants, gifts, and donations will be on the agenda next week and we will be discussing a list of those. And finance meeting minutes are attached to your agenda this evening and the next committee meeting will be Wednesday, October 7th at 10:00 in the Edmond Building. Oh, we need to review this now.
I'll just quickly summarize for you the meeting minutes from our September 2nd meeting. As Mrs. Elder mentioned, we'll be asking you to approve the authorization for representatives and permission to advertise for the joint purchasing. We participate through the intermediate unit and their paper and their fuel bids. Mrs. Alls House and I will be the representatives of the district. That gives us a little bit of flexibility to lock in fuel prices if we decide to act quickly if those were to, if they were to be advantageous to do so. We also talked about gifts, grants, and donations as an attachment where you'll see we're receiving many grants from the Greater Latrobe Partners and Education Foundation. They total roughly $260,850. So, again, there will be a formal presentation and a thank you at our meeting next week. We also reviewed the 2014-15 year-end reconciliation. We anticipate operating with surplus for last year, which is a great thing. We think we'll be within about 1% of our overall budget for revenue and expenditures. The audit is going to start at the end of this month, so we'll have our, you know, formal presentation from our auditors, you know, following, once they've completed our audit. We're required to have that done by October 31st. So, more to come on that. We also discussed the LES project and the funding options for that. So, we will continue to have dialogue regarding that project over the next several months. So, more to come on that. And we talked about investment options. You've heard me stand up here before and talk about how much money we used to receive, return on our investments, and obviously, the rates aren't where they used to be. But we're working with our Bank of Record, which is first national bank, and they're looking at coming up with a strategy to possibly get us a little bit more of a return on our investment. That might be ladder N C Ds if it's beneficial to do so. So, again, more to come on that as well. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 7th at 10:00 AM in the Edmond Building. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Property and Supply, Mrs. Cozart. Next week, we will have an agenda item to approve the purchase of Gator for the athletic trainers use. We will approve the purchase and installation of cart access doors at Bagley Elementary and Mountain View Elementary. And we will approve a 25-year lease agreement with LaCove, Park and Rep, and the Greater Latrobe School District for the third quarter playground park.
I have an answer.
Oh, is that a question? I would also like, Parker, to move for the eval branch resolution number 59, permission to advertise for the replacement of saw and installation of watering system at the Jefferson Water Station. Is that a?
Because that was not, I'm not voting on it tonight, it is open to the public to comment or have any questions on this specific resolution.
My name is Tim Talkers. Myself and Greg Fiume went to the committee for the building supplies and we got thrown out because they were having an executive session. An executive session?
Is this question pertaining?
Yes, it is, yes. Just hold on, ladies. This is, no, don't roll your eyes. You hear me? Stop.
Mr. Parker?
No, no.
She, she pulled up, that's not. I'm telling you right now, that's not.
No.
Stop right here, direct floor.
I went, no. No, I'm part of this. Do you think I can talk all night long? No. She rolls her eyes, she's giving me this whole big crap about the Steelers and all that stuff.
Please. We all have to compile ourselves with decorum. We can't speak like that here. If you would like to address the agenda item, please.
Yes, I am. I am suited to that. Okay, just listen. So, we got thrown out of that meeting because there had an executive session about legal issues. Well, there was no legal representation there. We also had, it was an executive session about personnel. Well, personnel isn't handled by buildings. So, it was all a bunch of hogwash. Way how? Mrs. Cozart, if you have all this money to spend on putting saw down, hell's fire. We're not the Steelers. The field looks great. You have, it takes, how much more do you want to spend on that? You're planning on the backs of the people this, this, this street by taxing them to death is very, very sad. And like Greg and I said at the meeting, nobody will answer any questions we have. It's all hush-hush, done in the back room.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? All those who voted, please say aye. All those opposed? I thought passage unanimous.
I'd like to review the minutes from the Property and Supply Committee meeting held September 3rd, 2015. At the meeting, on the 3rd, we discussed the need to purchase a Gator for the Excella Health Athletic Trainers. This is necessary, it was something that they had requested as a part of their agreement with the school district. And in addition to requesting it, they also provided us with a $5,000 check to use towards the purchase of the Gator. I say Gator, and I know that Gator is a specific brand. We are looking at Polaris, we're looking at Bardicat, we're looking at John Deere, but what we need is something that is more or less an ATV type deal, excuse me, so that our trainers can get down to the cross-country fields if they need to. We also discussed the need to replace several sections of sidewalk at the junior high school. Just because of time and age, some of that sidewalk has cracked, some of it has caved in. So, there are about nine sections of sidewalk that are in need of repair and the committee authorized me to investigate the cost to do so. We also discussed the purchase and installation of cart access doors at Mountain View Elementary and Bagley Elementary. These doors would match the doors that have been installed at the junior high school. It would be one door per building, one on the back of Mountain View Elementary and one at the main entrance at Bagley Elementary, at least preliminarily. That's what we've discussed. We would go with the same company that has done our other security swipe doors and it does provide an ease of access for our staff and it provides us an ability to maintain an accurate list of who has a key, to deactivate keys, and also to deactivate any keys that are lost. Total cost of this project will be offset by a $10,000 grant that was provided to the school district from the Greater Latrobe Partners and Education Foundation. I also updated the committee about repairs that were done at the cross-country course. Just before the season started, pregnant landscaping came in and resolved some minor drainage issues that were on the course and provided some services that gave overall improvement to the course. And I also updated the committee to let them know that we had installed the appropriate signage necessary to inform visitors, parents, students, staff, et cetera, of the surveillance equipment that is being used on our campus. You'll see those at the entryways as you enter the campus, you'll see them on the doors where they are necessary. We also held an executive session to discuss personnel issues, legal issues, and real estate issues. Our next meeting is scheduled for October the 12th, 2015 at 3:30 in the Central Administration Building. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Just so the public is clear, Greater Latrobe School District and this board are very concerned with strict appearance to the sunshine. When we have committee meetings, those meetings will open the public, but like some of our meetings, like some of the meetings of the Congress of the United States, like some of the meetings of our state senate, there are times when we have executive sessions. Under the sunshine law, it's completely appropriate with personnel issues, legal issues, rent state issues, that there can be an executive session. When we have an executive session, no one is thrown out of the meeting. People are asked, could you excuse yourself while we discuss something with an executive session? It happens in every model four. And in fact, before this meeting, the matters that were being discussed in executive session were reviewed very carefully with me and they were approved by me. You don't have to have a lawyer to discuss legal issues, you don't have to have a lawyer around to discuss personnel or legal state issues. But I will tell you, in fact, in this particular meeting, everything that was discussed in executive session was reviewed, I mean and with me, before such a discussion. The school board never asks people or never throws somebody out of the meeting in executive session. You go into an executive session, you ask people to excuse themselves, and when you're done, you ask them to come back. Anything that is transacted is business. Anything that is voted on, anything that is decided is always covered with this board and members.
Thank you, Mrs. Cozart. Student activities and recreation as an agenda item this week will be approving the winter sports bid. And we had the senior nights list last month except for the volleyball, so that time and date is listed there. And Mr. Mays, would you like to give us our stubble type review?
I will do that next week. I am now living spreadsheet the whole summer before you had a name. So, my Dan Watson Excel spreadsheet coming next week.
You get 10 minutes next week.
My name is, it's in color.
Maggie put it to my report. Community relations, Dr. George?
Yeah, I have a attachment for the minutes of the Lake Huron, Lake Huron Swimmer Street Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. The next meeting is this week, September 17th. We have an annual report, still called Lake Huron Unity Parks and Recreation 2014. So, I feel this year won't be that anymore.
August for 2014, so it was still a Lake Huron Unity Department.
But 2015.
It's different, so this, this is a phase to watch here.
All I got.
Thank you. Westmoreland Intermediate Unity, Mrs. Mays? Thank you. There are two agenda items, permission, ones to authorize joint purchasing consortium representative and alternatively, we didn't talk about that, that will be an agenda item. And then permission to advertise joint is a member of Westmoreland Intermediate Unit joint purchasing consortium for the 2016-2017 school year will also be an agenda item. There is a summary of the WID board meeting minutes from August 25th, 2015. And our next meeting will be next Tuesday, September 22nd at 7:30 in the WID Board. Thank you, Mrs. Mays. EWC TC going operating, Mrs. Cozart?
Yes. The summary of our committee meeting minutes from August 19th are in the top of the agenda. And our next meeting is September 23rd, so we have EWC TC.
Thank you, Mrs. Cozart. Work policy, Mrs. Alls? Transportation, Mr. Music?
Thank you. Do you have a, still start up? Yeah, I thought the school just started up very smoothly. I did a new piece, the technology that they use with the info, what's called Info Finder. The secretaries and principals found it very helpful. The secretaries at the elementary and principals did a great job. I mean, at first, the school went off pretty much, no, no hitches, but pretty smooth. And everybody worked very hard and, I don't know, the principal didn't work here. I thought the first day of kindergarten was extremely smooth and that's the focus date, obviously, so we're off and literally burning. Now we just got to, I think, wait for stuff.
Also, agenda item next week, the continued, actually, my first. In the last month, we, our next transportation committee meeting will be on Wednesday, September 30th, pretty good for senior high school.
Very excited.
Very excited.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Dr. Lottman. Personal health and wellness is a board review. The audience, the staff, we're doing what we needed. It's not a character for me, but anyway. Our next technology meeting is October 12th, 2015, here at the SISPM. Thank you.
Assistant candidates, recommendations?
Under personnel next week, I would ask the board to approve resignations that are listed. Tana Harbert, spring sports coordinator, John Penzera, the food service truck driver, and Stogria, basketball assistant coach for grade 8. In addition, I would ask that we approve some substitute teachers that have been interviewed and gone through the process here in the district. Always in need of substitute teachers, as well as some additional support personnel appointments, including custodians as well as substitute custodians, substitute personal care assistants, and classroom assistants. We have two names that we would like to have the board approve for additional AmeriCorps personnel that we were notified not too long ago that we were approved for next week, Bagley and Mountain View, Alyssa Ivenko and Alyssa Swank, as well as approve an error that was made. As well as approve an error that was made when the board approved Anne Zieg as the kindergarten teacher at LES, the salary list as far as educational background was incorrect. She was approved at a bachelor's step one, and it should be step one masters plus fifteen. So it's simply a correction to the amount that she would be approved at, and that would be asked to be approved next week. Under other business, I need for students, I mentioned the junior high open house next week, Thursday, September seventeenth, as well as the EWC TC joint operating committee meeting, which is next Wednesday, and Mrs. Cozart mentioned that. And the first official breakfast for champions for this school year is Thursday, October fifteenth, in the high school faculty room, dining room, at seven-thirty in the morning. The class play, the fall play this year is You Can't Take It With You, and it will be Friday and Saturday, October twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Board members, if you're interested in attending, please let us know. And I think it's the third annual band overall, I'm correct, I think this is the third one, is Thursday, October twenty-ninth, at seven PM in the auditorium. Board meetings are listed, just note that the October committee of the whole, instead of a Tuesday evening, is Monday evening, and that is because of the PSSA conference at first year. Thank you very much.
And just as a reminder, the committee of the whole meeting is, we don't have visitors hearing because we're discussing different things coming up at the regular board meeting, which will be Tuesday, September twenty-second. Will you have visitors, hearing visitors?
The, for the students that attended, this is a working meeting, and generally, there was no hearing visitors, but there was one item in general, and under the sunshine law that we talked about, for that one particular item, the public has no opportunity to speak, but that was the only item. Generally, we don't act on reasons at this meeting, but because of time constraints, there was one item acting on. The law requires that before the board votes on it, they get to talk about that one.
Any comments, questions for board?
Go ahead.
Meeting adjourned.